The recording, very good. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to Lakewood City Council. Meeting for this Wednesday, October sixteen, two thousand and twenty four. For those of you listening in, welcome, this is a bit off cycle from our normal Monday meeting because we're in budget cycle. So we're having additional presentations from each of the city departments. Uh with regard to our proposed biennial budget. And tonight's departments that are being reviewed will be municipal court, planning and public works and administrative services. So we'll start off with municipal court with our deputy city manager, Todd Kraus.
So municipal court's budget starts on page three hundred thirty one. I'll wait till Mr. Councilmember Bokey gets there.
It it takes him a while, he's only got.
Yeah. Okay. So starting with the org chart and I I'm gonna cover this pretty quickly, I'm just filling in on our municipal court's budget for Judge Mansfield. The municipal court is proposed to have seven point eight FTEs. I'm gonna skip over to page. Three hundred and thirty six, and this is the service program changes.
Alright.
I think the biggest change for municipal court is the elimination of an office assistant. The position is vacant and that results in about ninety two to ninety six thousand dollars savings per year. The municipal court also offered some other line item reductions. Uh office and operating supplies of three thousand annually, a uniform for a court compliance officer of fourteen hundred. They're no longer doing electronic home monitoring, so that saves about nineteen thousand. And they're no longer performing work crews, so that's an additional savings of twenty two hundred dollars.
So let me ask you the reduction of the vacant position office assistant. That takes it down to seven point eight?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And I'll just say that the municipal court continues with their veterans court as well as the community court and they've had some success there. Um. And really, that's all that I've had, because within the performance measures, you've seen this through the quarterly financial reports. It's the same story, filings are down, hearings are coming up.
Let's take a look at that, are there, from your vast experience? Are there better performance measures that we could or should put into place?
From an efficiency standpoint, probably, yeah. So, for example, maybe some court calendars.
Just to get to get an idea, cuz I don't see here, see. I mean, number of community group road tours, that doesn't mean a whole lot to me as a performance measure, to be honest, I couldn't tell you what that is.
Yeah.
I see cost savings, but it seems to me. A performance measure that we might find helpful is number of cases. Either filed and number that have been adjudicated through trial or. Uh Veterans Court or otherwise disposed of through settlement or resolution or whatever the prosecutor's office recommends and negotiates.
Yeah.
Seems to me that would be kinda helpful to know.
Yeah, I think these were provided cuz they were simple to get, but if you tried to translate it in dollar savings, it's very difficult to do.
Well, I don't know if we necessarily. I'm just speaking from my my own point right now, we'll see what the others have to say. I don't think dollar savings are necessarily a performance measure of how the municipal court is serving the residents. So I'm thinking it would be kinda nice to know what.
Yeah.
You know, how are we adjudicating uh the the cases that are. Brought to the municipal court by the Lakewood Police Department of the other cities that we actually cover. And how many of those are being resolved either before trial or after or at trial?
Yeah.
And how many are diverted through community courts such as our veterans court, that kind of thing, to me, I think that would be helpful information.
Yeah.
What do you folks think?
And I think we'll have a good opportunity to make some changes to these measures.
I think that would be helpful, Mr. Bokey, anything else on that?
None of that specific, can I move on, okay. Um question about work crew. We're get, did I hear that you said we're getting, we're eliminating it? And and I just wanna say that work work crew is one of these things, it's incredibly popular with the general population, right? With the with the public, they love work crews, so. Why are we, are are is the proposal? Do we have the proposal to eliminate it and what is the impact on on that?
So the reduction came about as a balancing measure. So they had already stopped doing the work crews and I can't tell you specifically what caused them not to have the work crews. I think there are opportunities within the departments that could utilize the work crews. But for some reason that stopped and I don't know if it's because they don't have the right number of um positions, if it's a two person crew that takes them out or what that that is.
Yeah, I know they they're actually. They actually cost more, right, I mean, but like I say, the public does love them. Um, so I'd be interested to know when when those went by the boards and um. And why, just just so we know for edification, because if if there just weren't enough people who are eligible, which is possible. Um, the other question I have is um on page three thirty nine, were you gonna go there or do you want me to?
No, you can go ahead.
Okay, so the contracts, so University Place has now gone on their way, they did that several years ago. In this, we are anticipating revenue from both the Stillicum and DuPont. Do we have annual contracts with them or do we have a, have they agreed now that they'll be in for at least two years for this biennium?
Oh, I can't remember the details of those contracts, I do know that those contracts expire, so they're currently five years.
Oh, okay, so they go beyond this?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
Councilmember Bokey, the 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 contracts with both the town of Stillicum and the city of DuPont align with the appointment of the municipal court judge. In that they both currently run through December thirty first, two thousand and twenty five.
Final question on the work crew piece, and again, I'm not gonna belabor that, but it was always of my impression. That work crew was a helpful amenity to supplement. The available needs we have for median or roadside or park or right away maintenance activities that might help. Not only deflect general fund expense, but also to enhance the opportunity for a diversion uh from. Otherwise, you know incarceration or fines through the court system. So provided an outlet for people to provide some giving back to the community and provided the city with some benefit, but it sounds like financially, that's not been the case.
That's not been the case, but I do know that there is a need for it, I know that our parks department could utilize.
Right.
Work crews, it's just not been offered, so.
Offered by the court or offered by?
That would go through the courts.
There may be something that we can look forward to, yes, it might be a. One of those other changes we can look forward to seeing in place, you know. Okay. Any else?
That's all that I have for court.
That's it, huh? Well, as a lawyer involved in courts, it's sad that you reduced it to one six minute billable increment, as we lawyers do.
Trying to get you here.
Okay. Very good, so next we will turn to a review of the planning and public works budget with our director Jeff Remack.
And so just to give Mr. Councilmember Bokey a head start, it's on page two hundred forty three.
Two forty three?
Two forty three.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Um, the document that we just handed out will be one we'll go at the end, but we'll start first to the regular operational budget. So for planning and public works, there are a total of seven divisions that are housed within planning and public works, that's the building and site development, planning. Engineering services, capital projects, economic development, housing and community services, and the South Sound Military Community Partnership. Um in looking at planning and public works, there are three specific goals that are called out that really affect planning and public works that we look at. That is goal one is the downtown parks and the multi-generational community center development, so we continue to work and look for property that we can do with that. Working with the economic development. And then goal four downtown and Lakewood Station District sub area revitalization and sustainable growth, so we continue to move. And look for ways to grow increased population as well as employment in those areas. And then goal three was for the parks and lake access, and really that's related to the Interlock and Bridge. And the potential future uses for that, as we continue to, we'll have a public session really to see what the future potential uses could be. There's also a number of council commitments that we look at, so the community engagement and transparency, regional and statewide leadership and partnership. Economic development to attract and create jobs, environmental protection and preservation, supporting human services, housing and homelessness. Commitment to diversity, equity and inclusion, recognizing the value and importance of JBLM and Camp Murray, as there are immediate adjacent neighbors and significant contributors to the community. And rebuilding our roadway stem and adding sidewalks and pedestrian bicycle access. These are the ones specific to planning and public works that really affect us. Okay, moving forward to looking at the building and site development, um one of the purpose statements there, the building site development divisions reviews and administers all building permits and compliance with federal, state and city regulations. It assists applicants in the development and their planned structures. They have a few things that are legally mandated that they do, they uphold the international building codes as well as the Washington State Energy Codes. They have a few important but discretionary they look at, um but we don't tend to add additional. When it comes to building code, because that is a highly regulated and we're not trying to impede any development or production, so. We stick to what the rules are for the state and what the state guides out. Okay, there are a few key projects that are coming up for the biennium, I'll kinda roll through them really quick, but um we're looking at these, the Alliance Mixed Use here in Town Center, the Grace Baptist Church, uh they're demoing and putting in four buildings that are we going in. Sure.
Get caught up with you here on the page, so cuz we're flying through at uh a thirty thousand foot level here, so are we in two forty seven?
Okay. Sorry, I'm what I'm looking at for key projects is on two fifty one.
Two fifty one, okay. Let me get, let me get caught up with you.
And I grouped this by specific by topic really to try and keep it, so we looked at buildings doing and then we'll go into planning. So there may be some back and forth with the pages.
No problem, just uh.
I'll I'll call, I'll help you, I'll help you with moving along with the page number. Okay, so some of the key projects for the upcoming biennium, um for housing, we're looking at the Alliance Mixed Use in Lakewood. Grace Baptist Church, uh it's gonna be four buildings that we demoed and a construction of two story thirty two thousand square foot churches that'll come back.
Where's that gonna be? I know Grace Baptist, is that the one on a hundred and twelve?
No, I I do not know for sure.
Okay.
But I could find out for you. Phoenix Capital Warehouses, um industrial building and we're looking at, it's gonna be. Two hundred and two thousand square feet and then it's gonna have a second B building to be eighty two thousand square feet, so. Spring Brook Phase Two, multifamily new construction and proposed six story multifamily building, I think the council's been aware of that one. The Lhasa Phase Three, um coming forwards, construction of four buildings, twenty five new affordable housing units. And the Meadowlark Apartments, that'll be sixty three units, uh three building multifamily and then a fifteen unit par development. It's gonna demo existing home and install fifteen unit apartment building. For commercial development that we're looking at, there's the new McDonald's new construction, it's approximately thirty nine hundred square feet. The Lakewood gravel pit, uh construction of about two hundred and twelve thousand square feet that they're looking at there.
Did someone come in for pre-app actually on that cuz it's been back and forth and back and forth?
So that that one is actually, yeah, they've not been in for pre-app yet, they've been in to see us and we're seeing more and more movement on that. In terms of the questions we're receiving. Uh Precision Countertops, thirty six hundred square foot expansion of their shop, quick quack car wash, and then of course Western State or Western State Hospital, so. That's the five hundred ninety thousand square foot, that's currently underway and actively moving forward. Moving to planning.
These are all to be done in the biennium or do you think twenty twenty five mostly, I know that.
The they'll carry across the, looking at the nature of the construction, they'll carry across the two.
Okay.
Um, so going to page two forty five for planning and what we're looking at for their purpose statement.
Hold on here, it's two forty five, okay.
Uh, the planning division consists of two parts, long range planning and current planning, the long range planning section manages cities comprehensive plan, sub area plans. Administers the ARPA program and the neighborhood coordination program and supports the planning commission actions. And creates and maintains long range plans, so this is the future state that we're looking at. And then there is the current planning, which reviews and administers all land use, applications and related development permits. For compliance with federal, state and city regulations, so current applications coming in to build right now are handled by the current planning. There is a number of legally mandated items that we must do when it comes to planning, so the Growth Management Act. As well as the comprehensive plan, which controls zoning, climate change, development regulations. Pierce Regional Coordinating Council, we pull together um and work with the rest of Pierce County. As well as the Shoreline Master Program and then the Critical Area Regulations. Some other important items they work on though is maintaining and improving relationships within the business community and then working with the neighborhood associations. Right, the some of the discretionary that we have that we work with though are the International Property Maintenance Regulations and then the South Sound Military Community Partnership, we'll talk a little bit more about that. On a separate section, the South Sound Military Community Partnership. Okay, some key items that are coming up for planning in the next biennium, downtown transportation system analysis, that's the RACE grant that we just received, so that'll be the planning and estimating for a walk shed as well as travel. Within the downtown area, climate change residency planning elements, that'll be starting. As well as the launch of the city's urban forestry program, Facet recently has been doing that, so we'll have that be able to move forward. The annual comprehensive plan and development regulation updates that we do every year, neighborhood coordination, you know, you've kinda seen desserts in the driveway, it's been moving and building those. And then the PSRC's regional staff committee, we attend PSRC and make sure that we're attending or paying attention to what's going on around. As that is where a lot of our allocations for growth and jobs come from. Right, and then we serve on the South Sound Affordability Partners, so we have the staff working group there.
So we are retaining the neighborhood association coordination position?
Yes, through twenty twenty five, right now, limited term. Okay. Moving to engineering and services and capital projects, page two forty five.
Can we get there?
Okay, so in looking at the engineering services and capital projects, that is the traditionally known public works department, as you would see at many jurisdictions. It manages the infrastructure that would be like your surface and stormwater management, your lights, any of your intersections. Um as well as your road maintenance activities that go along with that, they are kinda divided into two because we have capital projects that take on new. Uh improvements that we look at through grants and federal dollars that we move forward, and then we have the engineering division that looks both at. The engineering for new construction that comes in as well as the active maintenance of what we already have in place. Okay, we have some legally mandated items that we handle there, we have the city engineer for the RCW, it's our city engineer, Wes Anot, sitting with us today. As well as compliance with the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit, that's our stormwater permit that mandate comes from the state. The city's six year transportation improvement plan or the tip that we look at annually. The safety inspections of all city bridges on a biannual basis, just like Interlock and that came up recently, we needed to address. And then the Lake Stillicum Dam Safety Inspection that's done every five years, pavement condition evaluation of all city streets and roads on a four year rotation so that we can set our maintenance activities. As well as ensuring that the motor vehicle fuel tax revenue are only spent on transportation related activities and or infrastructure, so we don't get in trouble financially. Um, some other important things we deal with, we administer the Department of Transportation and the Federal Highway Administration Programs here for the city. And then right away guys acquisition with federal funds for when we have the capital project improvements that we move through. Okay, key projects for the upcoming biennium on page two fifty three.
Hold on.
Okay, okay, so some upcoming projects we have will be the overlay project, one twelfth and South Tacoma Way to Steel Street Overlay. We have our chip seal program, which is kind of actually moved around the county and spread as uh, sorry, sorry, the city. And gives us the ability to prolong the life of the roads without having to come in and pave. Immediately pavement patching design and construction throughout the city within allocated funding, so we look at the, as we do the index that we spoke about earlier and look at the four year. Rotation, we see which roads need repair, so we set those into the program to be moved forward. Safe routes to schools, they have the hundred and twelfth between Far West Holden, we have a design and construction that will be coming up. Traffic systems and intersection improvements, we'll complete the construction of ninety second and South Tacoma Way Traffic Signal Project. For streetlight projects, we have the twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four streetlight construction that we're still gonna have just a few that we're closing out that we're moving forward. Okay, sewer projects, uh we got complete construction of Rose Road and Forest Road for the extensions we're looking at there, sewer extension on Wadsworth, Silk Ox and Boat Street. And then a design and construction for Orchard Street Extension Project. We have some pavement marking projects that'll be coming up, re-striping roadways, replace Ross Road pavement markers. Um and then refresh crosswalk markings so that people can be properly identified crossing the road. And then for stormwater, they, we have a big education and outreach portion that goes with that, and that's both for the general population and public education. As well as going ahead to businesses and educating them on what the requirements are for containment on site and how they deal with that. Um, they do about two hundred compliance inspections every year annually, and then they investigate about twenty illicit discharges a year. So they also are the one who review our stormwater pollution prevention plans for all of the city facilities, so.
There there are two and maybe it's, I'm looking at the wrong spot, but two key capital projects that are near and dear to my heart, one is uh. Niantz is supposed to be constructed in twenty twenty five. Is that, or should it be on this list or?
It should be on the list.
Okay, yeah, so the Niantza project and then the design of the Whitman uh to Interlock and on. Mount Dahoma Drive should be on here for design in twenty six, actually designed in twenty five, construction in twenty six. That's what the bonds are for.
Correct.
So we need to put those on there.
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't miss anything for key capital projects? Yeah, exactly, and that'll be the design in twenty five. Yeah.
Okay, uh moving on to economic development, page two forty five.
Okay.
So in looking at economic development, um they improve the economic well being of the Lakewood throughout the efforts to increase job, attract, you know, attract jobs and new businesses to the department. They really have a uh tax base enhancement, when we look at the MFT, they're the ones who take a look at the MFT applications and they come in, assess them for alignment with the. Code and the ability to move forward. Okay, they have some important duties that they really look at, so maintaining and improving relationships within the business community, that's probably the one of the biggest ones we really do. Becky, who runs that division, has all the communications and they really, the the heart of what goes on in the pulse on what we do here. In the city of Lakewood and has opened the doors for us to really be able to open and try and work with people to bring them in as well as for our recruitment efforts. A number discretionary items we do that are very important to the city, um that we could choose not to do, but they benefit us in terms of bringing in new businesses. So looking at business licensing, job creation, workforce development, developer forums that she holds. Publication of the economic newsletter and indicator reports to give people an idea of how Lakewood is doing, creating recruitment, marketing, promotion and image plans. So when we go out to the different conferences, we're trying to pull people in and new business. Tracking developer leads and inquiries when they call in with questions about certain properties, permit facilitation. Um, she is the manager that is now over the permit text and the intake process, so working to make that smooth so that we get things under review quickly. Um and then our automated web based permitting system, cuz that is housed with the permit texts and the primary intake there. Some key projects we're looking at for economic development coming up, that's be page two fifty one.
And before we get to the key projects, so with regard to the automated web based permitting systems. Can you give us just a little bit of a snippet overview on the change to state law with regard to timing of. Uh permit review and processing and what we're gonna be doing grappling with accomplishing to make sure we reach that standard?
Certainly, um so State Bill fifty two ninety, State Senate Bill fifty two ninety that came into effect. Requires now that um any of our land use permits that are moving through the process, they have a timeline associated with them based on their level of review. If they refire a public comment, then the period is set for this, if they require to go to public hearing, then this is the timeframe. The goal behind that was set to try and facilitate housing and the ability to move it forward in a timely manner, so that was giving. Us a benchmark and a check mark that we needed to meet. In order to do that, we needed to look at the permitting system and how it comes in so that we could accurately track the number of hours and number of days that we're utilizing for the review. So when we look at our automated web based permitting system, we did go ahead and we put in for a grant, we received the grant, we'll be using that grant to develop and roll. Roll out a new permitting system that has to be in place by June of twenty twenty five. Um and what we're looking at is one that is more user friendly, both on the. Input side, so we're looking for something that has more of the TurboTax feel to assist them and being able to complete their applications and bring it forward and that it kinda. Assists them and helps them, and then one that is customizable on the backside for us to be able to set the specific requirements so we can track exactly. What data we need, cuz we have a reporting requirement to Department of Commerce under fifty two ninety. So currently, um we're working on that because the system while is being updated that we currently have, does not have those features constructed and we're actively working on that, so.
What kind of uh feedback or dashboard will the new software provide not only to you and your department? Uh but also to council, just to kinda see how we're measuring success?
So that is one of the requirements we have for a new permitting system, we're doing the RFP right now, so we've not selected one yet. But in looking at that, that is one of the criterias, what is the reportability that we can pull out, what data, what level are we able to go to and what we can draw out? Both for cycle times, when I say cycle time, the first time that we reviewed it. As well as any of the actual information for intake processing time, how long it was with the customer. All of that is important and being able to accurately meet the requirements of fifty two ninety.
Very good, Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um so what are the implications if we don't meet these timeframes?
So it's a scaled approach in what they look at, so realistically, we look at the first report being due in March of twenty twenty five on where our timeframes are at. Um, but you have to across five years have not met the standard for fifty percent of the time, at which point. You have really two options, you could look at fines that could be levied against us, or you go ahead and you pick options to do improvement to process. Um, at which point you get another five years to check fifty percent of the goal times that you have. And then basically about ten years out, you'll start getting financial fines if you don't actively meet the requirement.
So my follow up to that, based on your your history here, and we're glad you're here uh for the last year. And uh the budget going forward, do you think you have enough resources to make it happen? Technology aside, what about the human capital, do you have what you need? Given the anticipated projects and the capital work we've just reviewed briefly?
So so we're actively reviewing what we have when it comes to the FTEs and the ability to process what we have. What I would say is I I believe there could be the need potentially in the future, but there are process improvement through the lean. Process we need to do first, so there's a number of standard operating procedures that need to be established, um we need the new permitting system that's more. Readily available to the staff and is more supportive of what they do so that they can actively do the work. Um, so we can start tracking the metrics, so there are things we need to do first in process improvement before we look at adding FTE. Um, because we are processing the work and where we're at, we wanna do it faster, um but there are avenues to go ahead and and test and tune the machine and. And lean it out and get it running smooth first before we really know if we need additional bodies.
Okay, that's good to hear.
Keep going.
Yep, please.
Thanks.
Two fifty one?
Yep, two fifty one. Alright, page two fifty one, um so some of the major items that we do on the biennium are the business retention and expansion, so I spoke to the reports that are done by the economic development, but we complete a hundred. Business retention and expansion visits per year, quarterly and annual business retention and expansion report visits go out so that they know where we're looking at and we know internally how we're doing. Biennial Economic Indicators Report that goes out, updated contaminated site report annually, that's good for what people are coming. Biennial Economic Indicators Report that goes out, updated contaminated site report annually, that's good for what people are coming from. So they know whether they're going to a site that has um things that need to be corrected. And then we go ahead and we conduct two business events or forums each year in terms of looking to. Support the community and the ability to bring more business into the city of Lakewood. And then we survey businesses two times per year for what additional needs or help they may have. Um we do annually go ahead and create an underutilized property map as a tool for recruitment, so people have a visual representation to see where there's additional. Um density that can be put in, we produce a monthly newsletter that goes out, we have a biennial economic development recruitment brochure that we do. As well as a focus on downtown and Lakewood Station District Development as well as citywide development to meet targets. Um the one thing I can say that we have for economic development that is beneficial is with the planned action CIPA that's been done. That we have here in the downtown, it is the ability to really shorten the time in frame in terms of the permits, so in looking at. What we have available to us in terms of the code and then going ahead and looking at refinements to the process and what we're doing. Um marketing for the next biennium will be a big thing really for us in terms of what we can do, like this is how fast we can do it, here's where we're at. Come to Lakewood.
Right, so if you were to wave your magic wand, uh what would be your your hopeful wins at the end of the biennium?
Hopeful wins at the end of the biennium to me would be two. One, I look at Alliance in terms of what we have, um there is eighty thousand square feet of available retail that exists right now within the area. Um the desire to have the live walk work type society, um and what we're looking at and a neighborhood. The community parks that the council is looking at that they would like to see in the downtown district. Really with the raise grant and the future planning for those, I would like to be coming out of the biennium with the ability to really have a forward plan. To go forward for federal dollars to really make some of the changes in what we're looking at. There are some of the roadways that we have that we could do well if the city actually owned it for the maintenance and the activities of what we do with it that are here in the downtown area, so. There's it's a multitude of things, honestly, um but really to be set with a plan to move forward. But I would like to see some more housing coming in at the same time, um really realistically, someone needs to take advantage of what we've created. Here at the city of Lakewood and someone needs to be that that example, the first domino to fall per se that can be looked at as an example. And then we can go out and market it then, say, look what we did, look how we were successful, please come.
What what's the best way, again, you you've got great experience in another jurisdiction and you've had a good opportunity to. Immers yourself here, what do you think is is a way? Uh that we can harness those resources and tell that story and attract that first. Major project you'd like to see to kind of galvanize the goals and objectives that we've articulated for the last five years.
Yeah, so I think I think one of the biggest things we're gonna look at to move forward with that would be, we need one good, successful housing project, something like Alliance and what we're looking at. We need to take a look at exactly what we have the downtown um district that we look at in the sub area plan that's associated with it. I would suggest at the same time, listening to some of the developers and where they're at, the things that impact still even though we have it. Um some some talk about parking, you know, some will talk about the design standards.
Some impediments that we need to address.
Yeah, so there's there's a balance of things that you could look at as to what is our real goal. If our goal is economic development and we want that to grow, we want additional housing and we want additional. Employment and jobs and businesses in the area, is that the goal or do we want it to look one specific way? And so how do we mold that when we do it, right, to give some flexibility to to be functional? As well as um one of the things that I've asked the economic department to do is take a look at some of the areas out there that are booming right now and what they're growing. And then take a look at what their design standards are and where some of those gives are, right, so we can have a conversation about that. There's no reason that anywhere else should be growing faster than Lakewood, but we need to take a look at what's been working other places and then. Come back to council, these are the suggestions we're looking at, these were the changes we would need to make. And there's a conversation, a give and take to that, I think the best example, one that we had was when we talked about going to the master plan and you guys have recently approved. Moving to the five acres and looking at that and suggested also looking at the smaller parcels to see can more be clumped, create a master plan. Looking at those activities, but the question comes down to, I think you said it best right then, was you said it's been sixteen years that nothing has happened with this site. Do we continue to hold waiting for one specific thing or do we shift and hit what our target our goal is? There's more than one way to meet a goal, so sometimes you gotta just look at the other avenues and what we're willing to give up to get there.
I think we're looking for out of the box creative thinking to achieve the the goals again. Perfection's the enemy, they're good, we'd like to see a couple really good things, some good wins happen, because that'll help create some even better things.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um one of the things that's, you know, you talked about getting people. Developers to come into Lakewood, the other the other part of economic development is retention, right, and so. So what are we doing to retain some of our, you know, longstanding tenant tenants or businesses and. And how are we enticing them to stay? When times get tough for them or if they have issues and they, you know, can't get something rebuilt because there's new energy codes and things, you know, are we? What are we doing to work for them to 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 keep those folks around that have been committed to Lakewood for a long time?
So so I'll talk about like the building code portion of it when we look at it, the state building code council is pretty stringent on what must happen. There is an international existing building code that can be looked at and there are some dollar values associated with making like ADA improvements to new businesses. If it's gonna exceed fifty percent of the cost, then you can start to step down some of the items that you move through. So there are allowances that can be had, but there are other times when something happens and there's. There's really not movement that can be given on it because the state code is pretty stringent. Um we work to be as flexible as we can within the code to help people be successful. Sometimes you need to pick that you're not gonna make it twenty two hundred square feet because that trips a threshold. You need to decide, I'm gonna make it twenty one fifty, because I need to be below twenty two hundred. So we work also to explain that the options that exist, that's probably the biggest one. There's no one you're really gonna find outside of staff that works here and lives in Lakewood that knows the Lakewood Municipal Code better. Right, so the idea is we're here to help them be successful, that is the intent in what we do, it's not to be to stand in the way. That doesn't mean I can give you the world, that does mean I'm gonna show you what is maybe sometimes gonna be considered the least painful path. Though there may be still some pain associated with it. So that's in terms of getting the permits and trying to maintain where we're at, in terms of retention for people. In terms of enough people to be here, we battle a few things, right, we've gone to an online shopping. You know, nation in many a ways, so people battle that, be in a brick and mortar store, getting people to come in. But some of the things that the council's focused on in terms of like the parks and creating walkable paths in the downtown quarter, the Green Street Loop, things of that nature. They function really well in other jurisdictions and other states and where you where you go, I travel often to California for the military. And there's an entire development that is built with parks built inside of it, it's much like town center. Other than because it was built at a later date, there are parks moving through the buildings in terms of. Walkability and then it's surrounded and ringed by housing, both by multifamily and then going into condominiums and things of that nature, so. It's completely self-contained ecosystem in terms of what they're trying to do and where they're at. And some of the raise grant we're looking at will help with that in terms of plotting that out to change what we're looking at, change the feel of what downtown is.
Yeah, the raise grant impetus can really be, I think, a game changer, right, in terms of our. More modeled, up to date thinking about how we do business, how we wanna attract business rather.
Yeah, and that that's one we're we're keeping very close to the department, a lot of times for the city, we'll look in, we'll hire a consultant to do the work. We are looking at a higher consultant to do the heavy lifting when it comes to like the traffic engineering portion and accounts. But we're maintaining the project management portion of that in house, that'll reside with Angie, Assistant Director for the Division.
Great.
Department and uh that way we can really control and model exactly what we're looking to get. Not, we're already too far down the road and that wasn't what we were after, so that was just a recognition internally of what we need to do if we want to be successful.
Very good, just, Mr. Bokey. Um question about Western State, it's one of the items you have down here, it's a very large project for us. Is the bulk of the planning work for your department done now or where are you or where are we in this? Because it's construction's gonna, fill us in, when's construction supposed to be completed? Where are you at as a department in in handing out permits?
I I can't give you the construction completed date, that'll be a hundred percent driven by how fast they work in their timelines. And really what they lay out, in terms of the review though, we have a biweekly meeting that we meet with them to go over where they're at, they're actively constructing and building right now. Um they did come in, it was about a month ago, I think it was about a month ago, two months ago, Angie, correct me if I'm wrong, for their administration building was the second portion of it. Um they're actively working right now, so there there really is no holdup. When we looked at that, we recognized the need for this to move forward in an expeditious manner, there was also some things like structural engineering review that needs to happen, so you gotta go out to an S E for that. So we did go third party consultant um that was paid for out of the permit fees that came in for that. That has made it also move forward at a more accelerated rate because we're focused on specifically using the third party with what this is. Um it's a difficult building when you look at it due to the smoke separations as well as evacuation. Hospital is not something that you build build lightly, this is the second one I've done, um and so, yeah, they're they're fun, that's fun. Um but there, we're moving forward on that, I have no fears with Western State really where we're at, that one is moving along just fine.
Okay, so it's not. We have enough staff to handle this whole thing, it goes back to his question earlier because it seems like an awfully big project for.
So so specifically, when you have something like that, you'll dedicate an inspector.
Okay.
And a plans reviewer to that, so by using third party, we dedicated the third party plans reviewer and then we also went with inspector being third party. So that that person can kind of live on the site once we start to go vertical. There's a number of things that they have to look at on a daily basis that someone has to be there, at least like three, four hours a day to keep up with it.
Did Western State ever decide, the state ever decide what they were gonna do with their water?
No, they have not yet decided that, they are working with Lakewood Water, they're aware of where we're at. We did go ahead and tell them, we will go ahead and take your permit in under review, we'll issue what comes to your site development permit. We're not gonna issue your vertical permit until you surround in the water, there is a solution, I mean, they can choose to be their own water purveyor and move forward if they need to. Um or they can work with Lakewood Water to go ahead and find a solution. Last time working and speaking with Lakewood Water, it sounds like they're finding an avenue path forward, but ours will be prior to issuing the permit. You go ahead.
What way are they thinking about?
So really is they want Lakewood Water to take over the onsite wells that exist, but there's. Some cur- some caution is that Lakewood says, you know, you need to change this or do this before we'll take it over, so they're working through those.
Okay, thank you.
I'm looking at page two fifty one again, I'm building projects, Devco's still moving forward on the transit oriented development?
Yes. Okay, uh moving to two forty five for Housing Community Services.
Okay, let's see.
Services, so this is one of the divisions that I I find um. Interesting because it has a very large impact and does very good, great for the community, yet it's a lot of discretionary in what we look at and is guided off of what the council has chosen. To do. Um so when we look at it, we have the home, so we look at as well as the Community Development Grant Program, the Dangerous Building Abatement Program. Neighborhood Stabilization Program and our Section one oh eight program, um all of which is ran by Jeff Gum. And then our Rental Housing Safety Program. All of those projects were ones that were put in place by the council to help. Um affordable housing as well as to ensure that we had quality rental housing for people to live in and uh. A status and stature in the community that really says we're doing good and we're we're cleaning up and we're making things better, right, and we're very good at that. Jeff does a very good job with that. Some key upcoming projects, going to page two fifty three. So we will have the complete development and implementation of the five year twenty twenty five to twenty twenty nine. Consolidated Plan and then the associated twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six annual action plans. Um we'll have preparation of the fiscal year twenty four, fiscal year twenty five consolidated annual performance evaluation reports for C D B G and home programs. As well as perform eight to twelve housing rehabilitations and major home repair projects in twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six. Implement the new home fund tenant based rental assistance program, it's anticipated it'll help up to a hundred individuals. Uh we're assisting Lhasa currently with funding and consultation for phase four at the Gravel Lake Commons. And then we'll manage the city's emergency assistance for displaced residents program and the C D B G emergency payments. Uh whenever there's a fire or anything of that nature, they step in to assist. And then program to assist the extremely low income and minority households. Really good program, lots of good work. Any questions?
Don't see any, thank you.
Okay, and then moving to page two forty five, the last portion that we have to look at is the South Sound Military Community Partnership. The South Sound Community Military Community Partnership really is that alignment we have with. Uh Joint Base Lewis McCord and being so close and really recognizing what uh on base is needed. For support of the soldiers and their families here in the city of Lakewood and what is jointly beneficial to us. That and also we look to ensure the public and air safety in the. North Clear Zone and the regulatory compliance with FAA and D O D regulatory compliance. Uh like one of the big goals they have is to maintain mission assurance for J B L M, so they have a job to do and ensure that they're still able to hit that. And then full operational capacity and capability for the base as well. And then continued implementation of the twenty fifteen J B L M. Joint Land Use Study, so we did the land use studies for how we align and how we can work together and be in. Circuity, so we're working on that, some discretionary items we have, uh we conduct periodic J B L M needs and preferences surveys. And circulate those results, I think one of the most recent that we had where people talked about it was um childcare was one of the concerns. So Maria Tobin had given a presentation on that and childcare concerns and so that was something we've looked at in terms of zoning and how to make that efficient. And provide more resource there. And then enhance and expand the regional S S M C P membership participation and collaboration. There's a limited number of cities and jurisdictions that currently participate and we're always looking to extend that, so that'll be something we'll be doing every year. And then support active duty veteran and military family workforce development for both healthcare, social services. It's really that tie to us and the base and the ability to pull in federal as well as state dollars and really be seen. Is what that program spends a lot of its time doing.
Okay, some questions on that?
That does move through the seven divisions that we had and the next thing I was looking at to move to would actually be the handout that I sent around.
Great.
Okay, so uh what you have before you is the twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six permitting licensing rates um. Draft and proposal and what we're looking at, when I first came here, one of the things that I was asked to look at was the rates in comparison to some of the other jurisdictions, coming from a different jurisdiction with a different model. Really, it was just a chance to think outside the box really and kind of what we were looking at. Also, one of the things that drove it was, I believe, in full cost recovery and trying to recover the cost for what we do, the services we do, someone takes benefit of those. And if we're gonna do that, we should be able to pay for that out of the fees that we take in, otherwise we're using general fund. So the first page we're looking at here is for the Rental Housing Safety Program fees, um that program has always had a twelve dollar flat rate fee since its inception. But it does not cover the entirety of the cost for the program, so if you look at the left hand side there under the twelve dollar fee, if we were to maintain it. We would end up short about a hundred and twenty two thousand, that would be looking to have to be a transfer from general fund if the program was to be supported and about a hundred and thirty six in twenty twenty six. In looking for a hundred percent cost recovery model, I asked Jeff to go and look at other models that existed in different jurisdictions and then come up with his recommendation. As to how we could be successful and continue the program, but make it fully funded. So if you take a look at the right side where it says the proposed R H S P fee, that is for a fifty dollar base fee and then twenty dollars per additional unit, so. If it was a multifamily and they had ten homes, you would look at fifty dollars. And then the twenty dollars per additional unit they have, in looking at that and moving that through to cover the full cost of the program, we end up about twenty two thousand. Um ahead in the black come twenty twenty five and then about eight thousand when we look at twenty twenty six. So the one thing to point out to this is, I understand when people look at the cost of what it is, but Jeff did a great job also of researching and seeing exactly what are we bringing in for rental? In terms of the cost, the single family residents right now are duplexes, it twenty four hundred dollars a month is what's being brought in. So when we're looking at it, if you had a duplex, we would be asking a rental owner for seventy dollars to be involved in the program annually. Meanwhile, they're bringing in twenty four hundred a month, so it's not an overly impactful and you can see the percentages when they look at it, you're looking at about one percent. If you look at the very bottom of the chart there for where we're at, this would allow us the full cost recovery and the ability to move this forward. And maintain the program without taking anything from the general fund. Um we're also interested in how this laid out in relation to other jurisdictions, so. And Jeff did a great job of taking a look at those and pulling up all the others that have the rental program and if you really look at it. Um currently, the rate is lower than all but two jurisdictions and even with the proposed rate, it places us in the midpoint and has a fully funded program.
Is it accomplishing the goal, do you think?
Yeah, the goal for, yes, I believe it is accomplishing the goal of a hundred percent cost recovery.
But in terms of stabilizing uh the housing stock and bringing up the the base if you.
Oh, oh, very much so, I believe, um there was there was one the other day that they had, they went out and looked at and all of it had to be. Be reaffirmed in terms of re being rebuilt as to where it was, so the program works without the program, there's really not a check and balance, there's also not an ability to go in. And do the inspections that exist, so with the International Property Maintenance Code as well as. Having this program that's a mandate by the city, it gives us the authority to really maintain that we are not having subpar housing.
Great, any questions on that? At some point, uh we'll probably be asked to provide consensus to you for the proposed increases.
Yep, we're why, yeah, understood a hundred percent, this is a walkthrough so that there's a better understanding of exactly why. Yep, we're why, yeah, understood a hundred percent. This is a walkthrough so that there's a better understanding of exactly why and the direction why we move forward with that. Okay, moving to the next page. This is the Lakewood Licensing Program. In looking at the licensing program, um, we did go ahead and also look to have a model that will be fully self funded is the ability for it to support itself. It's important for the economic development in that portion. So when you look at the current sixty dollar rate, if you look at it, you'll see at the bottom, the delta there is about seventy three thousand dollars shortfall in twenty twenty five. And there'd be about an eighty six thousand dollars shortfall in what we're looking at. In twenty twenty six, the rate change that we're proposing is to go from sixty dollars to ninety dollars and going from sixty dollars to ninety dollars. Puts us in the black and gives us the ability to go ahead at the same time. And support some of the other proposed reinvestment projects that you look at on the left, which are all suggestions and where we're at. Those are ones we look at because they have a return on investment in terms of being able to. Make uh more tax income based than where we're looking at. For instance, um, when we've done a consultative targeted recruiting before and we've looked at it. Um, we got Black Bear Dieter. So if you look at the historical and where we're at, the tax revenue that we received off of that far exceeded what we spent in terms of. The consultants. So those are the things we're looking at as well as. Like item number one, we look at the recruitment market analysis tool. That's the one that we would like to look at that would go ahead and give us the ability to look at other jurisdictions. Where they're, where they're going ahead and they're flourishing and then give us the ability to do that research into why they're flourishing. Full cost recovery models appear as well. Um, so one thing to speak about with this, the base rate is set at ninety dollars and what we're looking at. And that would be the first entry year. But if you're a five oh one C.
Five one C three?
Five one C three, thank you. If you're five oh one C three, then it would be still maintained at the sixty dollars. So we would not be moving it up for any, or if you're under twelve thousand dollars, it would still be maintained at the sixty. Dollars. The second year though, and moving into it, what we would do is ask for, okay, what did you earn last year? So when you're looking at it, if you made. Three hundred million dollars, well, then you could probably pay more than the ninety dollars and the sliding scale would move you up to, I think the maximum we have is about two thousand dollars. But it's income based in what we look at for that in the second year. So directly proportionate to what people are making. So that was the idea there. We would not know what any of the the revenue that would come out of that though, until the second year really, because we'd have to see what people made for the year. Okay. Moving on to talk about the permit cost recovery. So this was one of the ones when I came in that I was very interested in looking at. When I looked at the permit fees and the rates and the hourly that we had, there was a ninety two dollar an hour rate. I asked about metrics surrounding what we did or how we set our rates. And there were not metrics with it. We had the flat rates and what we had for some of our permit costs. Um, so I needed to start somewhere. So what I did is I went ahead and I took the existing rates and divided them by the ninety two dollar hourly rate. To see exactly how many hours were being estimated to each permit to be spent. Um, so I got that number. Once I had that, I said, okay, this is how much we have per permit. Then I went ahead and took a look to see what we were doing in terms of a full cost recovery, if we were actually meeting it with the ninety two dollars an hour. So the table you're looking at there, um, that says planning and public works, there's a few things that kind of built that input. So when you look at it, you'll see the FTE says one point O or some or point five. And it's really based on the amount of time they spend looking at a permit review or they can be charged to permits legally. So we had eighteen FTE that work on intake review and permit issuance in the department with approximately eleven hundred and eighty hours. The eleven hundred and eighty hours that exists for they're looking at, that's because you need to take out the like the two weeks of vacation, the holidays they look at. The time that they're gone on sick leave as well as at least three hours a day they're handled on non, non-recoverable time when you look at it, because it's general questions that come in, meeting with someone. Things of that nature. So you end up coming down to about eleven hundred and eighty hours of available review time that you can really look at. For the entirety of the year. So taking those eighteen individuals and then totaling up what their total costs were, including salaries and benefits for what we had through twenty twenty six. And then comparing that against what the income would be at the ninety two dollars an hour, we ended up at a deficit. So we look to shift that and see what the deficit would be to make that up. And it went from ninety two dollars an hour to a hundred and twenty dollars an hour. And then we took the hundred and twenty dollars an hour and put it against the hours that have been delivered. For the different permit types. So that is, that's what would change and drive the cost of the permit and what we were looking at. Okay. So on the right hand, you'll see the hourly rate comparison. It really kind of lays out um just a visual representation of exactly where we were at previously. And what we had. So this is only including salaries and benefits, really. So things that we're already on to cover what we're looking at. If we move to the next page, though, we're going to kind of walk through some of the different permits that exist to get an idea of what that change really looks like. Um, and so that we can kind of speak to it. So. There are a few things that we're looking at that. Or kind of stand out, but then I want to talk about them a little bit. So in the first left hand quadrant, when you look at it is a site development permit, you'll notice that Lakewood currently shows that it is. The highest in terms of the cost associated with that, but that's because there are currently five different fees that exist. To do a site development activity permit based on the valuation of the dirt work you were doing. So when you look at that, it's artificially elevated. If I go and I look at twenty twenty four and I take a look at all the twenty eight that we've done. The average is three thousand dollars. So if you look at that on the right and then the arrow coming across, that puts us in the bottom fifty percent. In terms of the cost of what we're doing. We will look to review that in the future as to how we run that fee, but. That's how it came out. I just need to put an explanation on there so you understood what we were looking at. Some of the others that we have, um, we have a major variance in looking at it. You can see where you fall out. We're the third from the lowest when it comes to our cost with that, that we've had zero this year. Administrative variance, um, that comes in, that'll be more in place when it comes to twenty twenty five because of state bill fifty, fifty two ninety and some of the need to go ahead and do some administrative. Conditional use permits with that versus just going to the hearing. And then you'll see that it also does the same with the administrative area. So. We'll be moving forward on that. The one thing to think about this as we're talking about them is that every year now we'll be doing an annual assessment also of how many hours did we spend on a permit? So that can adjust what we do. So you can see a permit come number come down. Sometimes I've seen them come down by three years. Other times I've seen them go up by three hours. But you also do it across a rolling five has been my historical. So across the rolling five takes care of the highs and lows and kind of levels out so that you have some stability. Um, the entirety though, the goal though, is a hundred percent cost recovery that we're getting back. They're paying for what we're using and we're giving them that service. Good. Uh, continuing to move, looking at the conditional use permits, you can see where we kind of fall out there. Um, Lakewood falls out in the middle. And then at the same time, when it comes shoreline conditional use permit, we would fall out in the middle on the cost, but we've had zero this year. Um, pre-application conference. That that is actually um kind of interesting because we've had thirty two of them and. Right now, when you look at it, we're doing them at a hundred and fifty dollars. At a hundred and fifty dollars.
It's cheap.
We will, we're, it takes, yeah, so there's more than five people attend this meeting. And they have to do prep work and then they have to give a report out from this meeting. Um, we're losing money in a, in a major way with that. So. This year, what we're looking at is changing the pre-application and what we do with that. But we're also looking to add and include something called the staff consult. Staff consult is a meeting you can have. You get thirty minutes to come in and talk with staff. There's no prep work that's done ahead of time. You bring in your project, you sit down, you take notes as you're moving through it. And then you have the ability within twelve months to take that money, the three hundred and fifty dollars you put towards it and put it towards a permit, should you apply it on the same. Parcel. It's something that Kitsap County's done for quite a while. It's very popular in terms of getting. Answers to information and being to isolate a person to sit down and kind of look at your project for a minute.
And it is to identification at a.
Yep.
Real high level.
Yeah, it it makes it really easy also because they like the fact that it goes ahead and it gets credited towards your permit.
Right.
Makes sense, right? Uh, I'd, I'd be willing to look at also as well some of the pre apps and what we do. Some of the pre apps, when you spend the money on it. Um, it's beneficial to the department as a whole. Not only is it beneficial to the customer when they come in, but it's beneficial to the department. Because the front loading that you do in terms of giving them the information and how to proceed when it comes to the land use or their, their permits. Saves multiple submittals when they come back in. They kind of have a roadmap when they start.
That'll be great.
So we'll take a look at that. And then we have substantial shoreline development permit. So we had five of those. We fall out in the middle. In terms of where we really are. Move to the next page. Um. We look at SEPA. SEPA is interesting in terms of where it falls out right now. Because there are a couple of different SEPA levels. And while it comes out and says, yes, this is the level, when you look at the ones that we've done for the eighteen to date. Because they are inside of the business district here. They're not that full blown fifteen hundred that you would see for a normal SEPA. They're running and averaging on the six hundred dollar range. Which again, if you take a look at it, puts us back into more alignment. So. Um, take a look at final plats. We've had one of those. Um. No real fears, but that comes down to the time that we spend on it. And then preliminary plats, had none of those this year. And then the hourly rate. The hourly rate is kind of telling when you look at it, because if you look from left to right, it kind of goes from small to large. Realistically, in terms of the cost it is to do the business and what we're looking at, still puts us below the fifty percent for all the surrounding jurisdictions when it comes to the one twenty. Okay. And then there is one last page that I wanted to speak to and this one. This one's really telling in what we look at. We talk about how Lakewood has some of the lowest fees in terms of being able to build. If you look at the left. Bar chart there and what we're got, this is an SFR without impact fees, right? This is a two thousand square foot estimate looked at across. Twenty Western Washington jurisdictions without impact fees and looking at that, we are fifth lowest SFR tossed. In all of Western Washington. If you then go to the right bar chart and take a look and you add in the impact fees that almost every jurisdiction has, we move from fifth to the bottom. To being the lowest.
Yep.
And we are significantly lower than some of the others that are surrounding us, even the mid range and what we're looking at. So. It's just something to be aware of in terms of where we really are and how we are. So it's, I don't think it's a kind of matter of. The cost and what we do. It's a matter of availability of land because we saw what it was for the number of plats that we were dealing with. We are a fairly built out city. But with redevelopment and what we're looking at now with the missing middle that's coming due to the house bills that have come. We, we have the chance to look at some of the change that is coming with that as well, right? And some of the fees that are associated with it. So just to be aware of. Um, that's why this one's kind of on its own separate page so we can actively track it.
When I say, I think I sent you some information today from my day job jurisdiction and. I was uh frankly surprised grappling with a little single family residential. Construction, twelve hundred square foot home. It was about twenty five grand of. Uh, offsite improvements, curb gutter sidewalk for this little home, plus. The park impact fee, plus the transportation impact fee, plus this, you know, other two.
I took a look today and kind of moved through it and felt good. I'm like, you're doing good, Lakewood? We're not doing that.
Yeah. So there may be someday where we have a conversation on park impact fees because. That may be an area where it might make sense for us to come up with. Impact dollars to facilitate. Additional part.
There, there are different funding methodologies that exist and it's always comes down to council action or or will as to what you want to look at, but. More than happy to go through and discuss those as to how we can be successful. Sometimes it's just about choosing a path and then we have to really move forward with it.
And you're pretty, because we are a built out jurisdiction for the most part, right?
Yeah.
Pretty comfortable that the transportation. Funding that we've received to date is, is. Yeah, I don't want to say adequate because we can always use more funding from our federal and state partners, but. You feel like we've been able to, to do what we need to do with the level of funding we have? Without impact fees, I guess is what I'm saying, right? Because there's the, there's the policy challenge in the central business district where we do have one. And one wonders whether it's effective and impediment. Doing anything or not, right?
So, so I think the reality will be looking at what happens now. We, you know, we just, that you just voted to change the policy and what we were looking at. So that would allow for a better increase in collection of some of the, the TMF in terms of. Downtown and what we're looking at. Um, because previously it, it, it kind of, it was. Shortfall in terms of like, you didn't have to be. In very long or out very long. There was really no end date for in terms of when we would collect a TMF again. Um, I, I do believe there's a number of improvements that need to be done and there's going to be a number of things that we're not able to get through federal grants or state grants because they're going to be seen as standard routine maintenance. So we will need to have a discussion at some point. At some point, there will need to be a discussion about. What other avenues exist in terms of being able to generate revenue for traffic improvements and how do we do it? And so that is a conversation through what is allowed legally, you know, what we can get through grants. And really how we want to do that. But I think when we do that, that's something that we need to stand behind in terms of where we're at.
Yeah.
And then you look at what other offsets or gives there can potentially be to maybe offset some of that. The one thing I can say about impact fees, they're standard other places in other jurisdictions. People are used to them, so it, it can't necessarily, in my opinion, be what is stopping. The, the construction. So I'm more interested in getting to the lean process and where we're at, marketing what we have going on. Getting a development plan for what the future is going to look like with the raise grant and what we do in our downtown. And then affecting a change in that manner, but having worked the other jurisdictions and looking at the others. It, an impact fee is a standard that we see everywhere. So in fact, some of these that I took off and didn't leave in here. Um, I did not put any of the mandatory utilities that were included with some of these jurisdictions to come in. So where you talk about the twelve thousand. I think Gig Harbor came in at needing twenty eight thousand dollars to do a two thousand square foot home. And permit fees.
All the associated impact and permit fees?
Yeah, there's all the impact fees, the associations, the utilities, the improvements on the road frontage, like things of that. I was like, wow.
And, and yet everyone's demanding affordable housing, right?
So, yeah, and it's, and it's a catch twenty two when it comes to affordable housing. There are a number of things that go into it. There's regulation that goes into it and the cost associated with it is time it takes to process a permit. There is things that are beyond our control when it comes to the cost of the product and where we're at. And then inflation and how it exists, you're going to have to pay someone more to go ahead and take care to build the home. Because it's a skilled labor scenario and price is a premium, so.
Right. This is helpful, the conversation, I think. Anybody have any questions? Some of these items? Deputy Mayor?
I don't have a question, but this really answers my question. So what people say is way too. Expensive to do business in Lakewood.
Yeah, right.
I mean, really.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This tells a different story, obviously.
The, the reality behind it and what you got to recognize, I think, is. That when a person works in one jurisdiction and they'll say, they say that, that's because they work in that jurisdiction consistently. Or they'll say, I could do it cheaper when I was at Kitsap.
Yeah.
Because honestly, Pierce does it cheaper than Kitsap for everyone who ever talked to me for the last fifteen years.
Yeah.
But then I, Angie went, Angie used to work for Pierce and we were, so we would still communicate, communication said. Hey, what do they say over there? They say it's so much easier and cheaper in Kitsap than it is in Pierce.
Right.
So part of that is the, it's just the nature of the, the industry. Um, people talk to me and they're like. Yeah, how's your day? I'm like, people don't call me because they're happy, right? They want their home. They want to do these things. I'm used to that. Uh, that's just kind of what we do. I think when it comes to housing, getting something that gives you a clear visualization of where we really fall out. Which we do this annually, or my, my experience has been to do this annually for the last ten years. I've been doing this annually to see where we fall out against the other jurisdictions. It gives the ability when people come to be like, really? Just here's the numbers.
Mm hmm.
Right? And so that's one of our focuses also when we look at it. Our metrics for processing time and things like that will be turned outward facing.
And I think, I think you've hit uh the issue in the head again anecdotally. Because I was in the industry as a private practice guy for many, many years. And you had the forum with many of the folks I was associated with. And I don't recall in any of my conversations. Other than perhaps anticipated transportation impact fees on some gravelly development. I don't recall that fees were the impediment or the angst causing issue. It was. The customer service approach to getting the permit done and the processing time. That they could expect to receive the permits. That, that was the angst. I know you're working on it.
That's, and that, that's my experience. So when we look at it, it's predictability.
Yeah.
If I turn this in, when do I get it back?
Yep.
The handle time.
Yep.
And the, the idea that the mindset behind the staff is, I'm here to help you be successful within the confines of the code.
Being go, yeah.
That's it.
How do we get to yes?
Yeah.
Within the bounds of the law.
I say, let's not say yes. I say that, Mayor, only because, uh, yeah, I've got caught. That was mine once and they said, oh, you said you were going to give me the yes. I'm like, I have a rule still.
Yeah.
Um, help you be successful within the confines of the code is my, is my shtick now.
Yeah. I, I really do appreciate. This, I, and, and the comparisons are really helpful because we always ask for them. So I'm glad you anticipated like, what does everybody else do? I appreciate the graphs and I think that really helps us kind of set the debate going forward. So when will we see the proposed fee increases, the actual like, what, what do you anticipate?
So, so I've already completed that and turned that in, so.
Okay. The next month or so?
First quarter.
Hmm? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, and it will include all these things that you're talking about, your.
I didn't, this is not in it. It'll be your standard, the standard Excel that we see, but it will have all the increases in it, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll have the changes in the fees, in the fees and a description of why and then some comparisons.
Okay. Yeah, and I'm, I'm with the mayor on, um. You know, my day job, I see impact fees and I. You know, sometimes I think they work and other times I don't think they work, but as I've said before, um. We are a center, a regional growth center, correct? We have to take a lot of housing. We have to tell people. Every time they're mad at us when something is getting built, that we have to take this housing. We have to make room for eighty three thousand people. Other cities don't have that. And we either make it a, always a liability. Or we try to make the best of it. And the way to make the best of it is realize that there's.
Or we try to make the best of it. And the way to make the best of it is realize that there's value to having, ra- rather than. Take the approach that I always take like, wow, eighty three thousand people, thank you, PCRC, um. We, we can turn it into a positive and when, and actually have a, a, a real discussion about. There's value to that. We have now created value to that, whether we philosophically agree that. The government should be creating value for governments to make money off of, but I think that that's the discussion we need to have going forward. Because there's going to be expectations coming with this. People are going to be coming from different parts of the state, different parts of the country where they have these things. And they get amenities and they're going to be like, wow, where's my park? And so, um, I think we've done well on other things like roads, but I. I think, I think it'll be a good discussion to have going forward, but I appreciate the work on this.
Thank you. That's it, that's it. We're done. Thank you much.
Well, I appreciate your work and, you, you know, importantly to me, I appreciate the conversation, the dialogue because that flushes it, you know. Fleshes out uh, the, the bigger conversation from the policy perspective, so.
Yeah, any, anytime, it's over here.
Yes.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Yep. Thank you, Angie. Good to see you. Okay, and last but not least, certainly we've got administrative services with our deputy city manager, Todd Kraus.
So I'll be starting on page two hundred twenty-one.
Two twenty-one. Now, when you say two twenty-one, you don't mean two twenty-four, right? Or two twenty? Yeah, there we go.
Two twenty-one is two twenty-one.
There you go. Yes, exactly.
We are.
Yeah. No problem.
Two twenty-one?
Yeah. Yeah, I know. She was helpful. It's good. Okay, we're there. We've got.
So I am going to cover administrative services department. We are a department of twelve. Um, this is a change from the previous biennium and that is with the shift of the GIS position, moving over to public works and. Uh, planning and public works. And the reason for that is. Planning and public works with now with community and economic development and public works combined, they are the primary users of the GIS function. Also, because they are implementing a new permitting system to meet the requirements of fifty-two ninety. There's a lot of work that is going to go into that utilizing the GIS position. So it just makes more sense to have that position housed there. Uh, the next page is on two hundred and twenty-three. This just talks about what we're legally mandated and what's important and discretionary. So, um, you know, a lot of the things that we do, they are legally mandated, but at what extent? So there's a lot of things that we're doing above and beyond what the minimum requirements are for the legally mandated. I'll turn to page two hundred and twenty-four. This is a listing of our accomplishments. I'm not going to cover all of them. Uh, but I will say, just point out a couple of things for finance. And, um, that is just the level of reporting that we do and starting off with the budget document being the most important document for the city. Followed by the annual comprehensive and financial report, which measures the results of our budget and our actuals. And then just everything in between, our budget adjustments, quarterly financial reports and forecasts, special analysis and things like that. For information technology for twenty-three and twenty-two four, we've been focused on cybersecurity. So there's a lot of things, actually, everything that is listed, um, on page two hundred and twenty-five relates to the cybersecurity. So just because we've implemented those doesn't mean that we stop. And so if you take a look at the. Uh, dollar amounts that the city council we're asking for from the city council, you'll see that we're still continuing. Our cybersecurity initiatives, that's in the tune of three hundred thousand dollars per year to continue doing what we currently are doing. And that is with the endpoint detection, uh, managed services provider, um. Also like our disaster recovery, things like that. So we'll still continue. It's just. We're going to be shifting in twenty-five and twenty-six to more of the application side. And that being, and you probably have seen the Microsoft three sixty-five implementation, that is a pretty big project and will take us. Through some time. Some other applications is the new financial system that is scheduled for probably two years. Um, timeframe, it's really just an overhaul of our financial system. You had, um, asked about some of the. Reporting out of the permitting system, we'll have enhanced reporting there too.
And are you implementing that in the next biennium or no?
We are starting in, uh, April first, twenty twenty-five and I'll take us through the end of the biennium.
What's the new system or the software that you're planning to implement?
Um, it's an upgrade to our current system, which is our Tyler. So we'll stay with their product, um, but it'll be called, uh, Munis Systems.
Got it.
But it's a good opportunity for us to revamp and do things a little bit differently as well.
Okay.
So that's what we'll be doing in twenty-five and twenty-six. On page two hundred and twenty-nine is our program changes. And so for finance and non-departmental, we're increasing about twenty-two thousand dollars. The financial or the annual state audit is costing us about four thousand more each year, but actually we learned it's going to be a little bit more than that. Uh, for twenty-five and twenty-six. Um, for non-departmental, the non. Uh, the conflict public defender estimating twenty-one thousand, and this is before any changes in, um, the OPD standards. Uh, we have some minor increases in membership fees and subscriptions and then, uh, we are reducing. Non-departmental paper supplies and paper omelets, just because we're getting rid of paper and doing things more electronically. So that should save us about twenty-two hundred dollars.
Except for these beautiful budget books that you printed for us in color.
Yeah, we would have gone.
Probably would have saved five thousand dollars, yeah, right.
For hard copies.
Really?
You may, you may recall.
Yeah, I may. I appreciate it too.
So on page two hundred and thirty, so under administrative services is the, um, administrative management of the fleet and equipment fund. And so here we have about eight hundred and four thousand dollars of, uh, vehicle replacements in twenty twenty-five. You heard the police chief talk about an evaluation of the, uh, leasing of the unmarked vehicles. So we'll be taking a look at that. Later this year.
Sure.
I want, I want to ask about the vehicle thing because I don't know that we ever talk about. It's only, the only chance we get really is a budget. And then when the, when the chief brought that up and, and. And I kind of gathered he's doing that based on experience that he's had, it sounded like, or that other departments are doing. What kind of, I mean, when you, when you give us this list here and, and we nod like, hey, great, you know. Ford P I U and Chevy Silverado and. What kind of software, what kind of system do we use to help us determine when to surplus a vehicle?
So they're taking a look at the mileage. They're also taking a look at how frequently an item goes into the shop.
Okay.
So.
So that's just, there's no specific program that we're using. We're just tracking costs.
One time that they were using a system. I'm not sure that they actually use that, um, but we do track like the cost of the vehicle maintenance. Um, by vehicles.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And that, and I don't know, how, what do we do for larger? We don't spend too much on equipment for parks and public works. What do we, what do we do for that? Do we, do we buy my, I know we're buying Marion mower or something and.
Yeah, so they also do the same evaluation, just taking a look at the life of the mower. Um, the amount of time that it's out of service, the amount of time that it's in the shop for repairs.
And then if they need a larger piece of equipment, do they, do they lease that? Do they lease it from the county or do they lease it from somewhere else?
If it's for equipment that they don't use as frequently, then yes, it would be a rental. Of a, uh, piece of equipment, but if it's something that they use in their, you know, daily operations, it's something that they would buy.
So when, when we go out and rent equipment, how, how do we, how do we do that? Do we have like? We've got a state contractor or whatever with the school district to buy gas or whatever. We do that thing. What, do, do we have some kind of contract to the state or is it just up to public works to kind of, or parks to say? Hey, we need a backhoe to do some work.
Yeah, usually the, the dollar amount isn't that high. So you'll take a look at how much they spend on the equipment rentals. It's not very high. So they are not going off of a contract per se.
Okay, great, thank you.
The thing with the, the lease, um, of the, uh, unmarked vehicles for police, I think it's a great concept. Um, one thing that we don't have is our review of it. So we're going based, I, I think it's a dangerous thing to just go based off of what the company is providing. We really need to have time to evaluate those numbers and that's just something we didn't have. So we've scheduled it for later this year. Remember, they built in assumptions. They don't necessarily have all of our data, so. Um, getting back on track, um, information technology, I've already spoken about the movement of the GIS position. There was the six-year strategic plan that we've updated and, um. That includes expanding our wireless access points, um, replacing and expanding our video surveillance. And replacing our server and host replacements. We have our annual computer replacements of about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. We have a storage network of about a hundred and fifty thousand in twenty twenty-six and then some ongoing costs. And we did some copier replacements this last biennium, but we still have a couple more to do, so that is also in the request. The cybersecurity initiatives of, um, three hundred thousand each year, that's towards the middle. So everything there, we're continuing to do. We have that ERP system. I mentioned that it's a major, um, project. And so really what you need is a really good, strong person who has the expertise. And so that's what you're seeing for a hundred and thirty-four thousand. Um, dollars each year. The other items you've already approved there, the Lexi pole, um, for the police department, you approved that during the. I think it's mid-biennium or the carry forward. So this is just the ongoing cost for it. The Axon, um, tasers and body cameras, as well as the interview room and the in-car cameras, you've approved those previously. But they were one-time funded and so we're adding those back in and reflecting it here. Um, and then the rest of it is, um, just our performance evaluations and the numbers that support. What we will be doing in twenty-five and twenty-six. And that concludes my presentation.
Very good. Any questions? Well, I guess that means you were too thorough for us to fly, find me fly specks in the pepper, so that's good.
Well.
So that's a legal term of art, yeah.
Did ask me what I would do if I had to cut my positions in half.
Yeah.
And, uh, will still do, it just, uh. You know, over time it may, that we can do, yeah. But I did want to bring as part of this presentation, the utility tax. Um, so what I have for you is a draft ordinance, um, that our legal department prepared. It's very, very simple. There isn't really a whole lot of changes. Currently, our utility tax for electricity and natural gas is at five percent, whereas most jurisdictions. Uh, levy a six percent utility tax. All of our other utility taxes are, um, at the six percent. So, um, this really would just get everything in line. And also as the city manager mentioned in his budget presentation, we had four unfunded positions in our police department. This would really help us get to full funding now that we're fully staffed. And, you know, even then, being fully staffed, we have positions that aren't really out there, so we do have some overhares as well.
So going to six percent yields roughly five hundred thousand a year?
It's about five hundred and fifty thousand. There is, um, this ordinance, you'll see that the, it doesn't go into effect until sixty days. After the city council approves. So we're looking about end of January. So in between the time that this gets approved, we'll be sending out notifications to make sure that the utility providers. Um, get their system updated. Um, but, you know, there was a mention when we first brought this up. Uh, when we were looking at the financing options, what the impact would be to the average homeowner. So we worked with the utility providers and, um, P S E providing natural gas. The average, uh, monthly increase is about a dollar. Uh, so that's like twelve dollars a year.
Right.
And then on the electricity side with P S E, the average monthly increase is a dollar sixty-three. Lakewood Light and Power, the average monthly increase is a dollar and eight cents. So, uh, not a huge impact, um, per average resident, but a huge impact to the city to be able to fund those positions.
So let me ask you this, just to be aligned with the biennial budget, is there any reason why we couldn't? Set this for consideration before the end of the month of October so that the sixty days would take care of November and December? It would be in place for you by early January of twenty twenty-five?
Uh, we, I guess we could take a look at, I think what I had scheduled for was just when you were going to, we were going to have the public hearings. Um, I guess if we wanted to do a public hearing, I think we're really pushing it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think we have to do a public hearing. I would strongly recommend you do a public hearing and then to do a public hearing, we have to give notice. And so you're not going to make this coming Monday regular meeting, so that's why the, the D C M is recommending November fifth, Mayor.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll say that I did factor in that we wouldn't have it implemented right on January first.
Okay, no problem. That makes sense to me. Mr. Bogey?
Yeah, excuse me, I must have been. Explain to me the, the recommended increase again.
Five to six percent.
Yeah, so all of.
Some places are already at six.
Yes, everything is at six percent except for the natural gas and electricity.
The natural gas and what?
Electricity is currently at five percent, so we're asking to increase it by one percent, which would give us about on average five hundred and fifty thousand.
But I'm on TPU electricity and I thought I was already paying six.
So that's a little bit different because TPU you're paying is a, I think that's the franchise fee. And then the city gets back a portion of it. It's about two hundred thousand dollars that we get back. Uh, and that was to fund transportation projects. And that happened, I, I can't remember what year. It's been a number of years ago.
But all the P S E stuff spent at five?
Yes.
Including their electricity?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. All right. Thanks.
Any other questions? Mr. Pearson?
One, you, you listed three dollar charges, the, so P S E power, P S E. Gas and then was it water, something?
Yeah, and actually I should have said, this is on page one forty-six of your documents and I have in here the impact of increasing the utility tax. Natural gas through P S E is a dollar on average monthly. Electricity is provided by P S E, average increase is a dollar sixty-three. Electricity through Lakeview Light and Power, average increases a dollar and eight cents per month.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let me just say, uh, we're getting close to concluding the department presentations, right? Tonight is, yeah. So what I wanted to say, uh, is, thank you. Uh, I have had the chance to. Do this now for fifteen years here in Lakewood and, and more recently in another jurisdiction. And I continue to brag, uh, to many folks about the transparency. The legibility, the readability of our budget document, because not all places. Have it as good as we do and much of that is due to you and your team and I really appreciate that. It's just so legible. Otherwise, oftentimes people just, you have this reams of Excel spreadsheets with codes. And you have to figure out. Yeah, you got to kind of figure out what the hell it all means and we lay it out, so there's no guesswork. It's transparent for the benefit of the citizens, the residents of Lakewood and you can clearly see, uh, any proposed changes. Uh, you see the impacts for whatever policy decisions we're making. So I just want to thank you for that. It's really, really well done.
Yeah, thank you.
It is so well done that people tell me to stop talking about Lakewood when I bring it up. They're tired of hearing about Lakewood, yeah. But I'm never going to stop. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and I will always keep my charts very, very simple.
Well, it's good. I mean, that's why it's nice to have it printed, you know, it, it, I know it takes some money.
To justify.
Yeah, justify the printing expense, but it, it really helps to kind of walk through it and, uh, everything is just. It's well laid out. It's very clear and obviously it justifies the numbers. Oh, there you go.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate that.
I can understand.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's, uh, you, you know, I'm not the one reviewing for purposes of all the awards that you're. Well, it's, it's uh, you, you know, I'm not the one reviewing for purposes of all the awards that you're, you, you and your team. Uh, are generating for the benefit of, of Lakewood residents. But it's obvious why, because it's really well done. It's thorough, but it's also legible and transparent. And that's much appreciated.
Thank you.
So. Great, well, anything else, Mr. Caffield? We're good? Well, thanks again. We're adjourned and I then uh again reiterate. Ms. Tauss's comments that this completes and concludes the budget presentations for the twenty-five, twenty-six biennium. Great, thanks.